Good evening, this is Mr. Steinhardt. This is the Select Board's meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. At the, in attendance is Mr. Mogulyn, Mr. Fox, and Mr. Diddy.
Good evening and welcome to the Selectman's meeting for Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. It's 5:30 PM. The first thing we have on our agenda is public comments. This gives anyone in opportunity who's not on the agenda, who would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this is your opportunity. I'd ask that you please stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here at this time that would like to make a public statement?
One at a time, please.
Sir? Oh, I thought he had his hand up, I'm sorry. No, he doesn't.
All right, seeing none, we'll go right to the agenda. The first thing I'd like to do is acknowledge payables warrant number 2022B dated 2/24/2020 in an amount of $329,727.08. Do we have minutes of...
That'll be the 18th, sir, and I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there executive minutes?
Yes, there are. We are distributing them now.
Okay. Everybody can review those, please.
I'll make the motion.
Need a second?
Sure, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Pass those back. All right. Then we'll go right to the action folder. The first thing I have is 1A. It's a letter from the Business Education Alliance at our school system. And it is a letter addressed to Dick Grinnell's, our DPW engineer, and also the town of Southwick. And it's, the Business Education Alliance is going to be recognizing the town of Southwick and Dick Grinnell's for all their cooperation that they have done over the years by bringing interns into the DPW and working with the youth of our community. And that will be an event, April 15th, Wednesday, April 15th of this year, from 6:00 AM at Southwick Regional School. So if we can send a, some sort of recognition letter to Mr. Grinnell's and the DPW for the great work they've done assisting the BEA.
And this was, the intern this time was Ms. Motzko, who on her first day on the job got to meet the Lieutenant Governor-
Oh, that's correct.
-on the way along Claus Anderson Road, right? It's a great program and I'm, you guys have had-
We've had three so far.
Fantastic. And I met him last year, I think, last year or the year before at the dinner. And that person came back and worked for you over the summer, right? So fantastic.
He's off at college, right Randy?
The kind of role he was last year's.
So, somebody, one of us should try to make this. I'll put it on my calendar to see if we can do it.
Dick and I are planning a thing.
Yep, fantastic. It's always a great, great thing.
Russ, on agenda number, amendment number two, you skipped the motocross 338 approved open practice.
Okay. The, because of the motocross, 338 was working with the Discovery Channel-
Right.
And they wanted to hold a practice which I'm told was never, never happened-
Okay.
Because of the track conditions. So we did, I did give it the green light-
Yep, that's fine.
Because this would be an opportunity to promote the town of Southwick on national level, on TV.
Yep.
So we'll just see how that pans out, whether or not they-
I don't know if it's any good, because my understanding is Discovery showed up and maybe the police chief was there, so I don't know if the police chief has good footage or not. I don't know how he looks on TV, but-
Oh, you mean being photogenic?
Being photogenic and all, but the Discovery Channel definitely was there and I-
Well, wasn't Marka-
Maybe the chief got in a few spots, so hopefully they're still gonna film it, you know, hopefully he makes it to TV.
Hopefully we still get some-
Didn't we have a previous chief on TV under that economic show, American Greed or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I hear it was a great, Discovery was there, there was a huge crew, production filming, the whole nine yards. But they really actually didn't do anything because of the conditions, probably were you.
Well, as long as they spelled Southwick correctly, that's all that matters.
They had their dinner and they, yeah.
There you go.
Fantastic.
Okay. 2A is the job description for the youth adult librarian. That's, we wanted reviewed by town council, by labor council. 2B is the assistant director. And 2C is the reference librarian. All, all three have been reviewed by labor council and we're all set to go, so we need a motion to accept.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, two of these three are with the bargaining unit, so I need your okay to submit them to the bargaining unit.
I, do you need a motion on that?
Uh, just-
Verbal, okay.
Just a recognition in the minutes that they're gonna be forwarded to the bargaining unit.
Absolutely. Okay, 3A is from DPW Director Randy Brown. It's concerning the water system improvement project change order number two. Randy, you have the floor.
Oh, just a couple items, a couple of add-ons, storms in pump station on Jerry Drive. We're actually, if you look, the value, the change order is actually a decrease in contract value. There's a couple things they're taking out of scope, some cost. But the big item is a, it's a sample return pump, which allows us to monitor pouring as the residual in Springfield's water that comes into the pump station and we circulate that through the system. That was the biggest cost. That would be something that wasn't in the contract, but it is necessary, so. We'll watch this residue, do that change order last week at our meeting, considering it's pretty on that paper. So, for your blessing as well.
When are we gonna be up and running, everything all set?
Close, it's been dragging on longer than it should have, but-
Looks great.
The, keep it real well.
It really does.
But I hope by middle of March, we'll be up and running with that pump station.
You got it.
Immediately March.
I need a motion to approve the change order.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we'll sign it. Randy, thank you for that. The next is a letter to be submitted to the Open Space Committee for inclusion in the Open Space Plan that's submitted to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Has everybody had an opportunity to read it?
This is gonna allow the regional planning agency that is helping us to finalize assembling all the components of the plan. And that'll be, our letters along with many others will be incorporated into it.
Any a motion to authorize the chair to sign?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous and I'll sign that. Next thing I have is agreements, I'm sure this is under the Community Block Grant, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Town owner agreement.
Okay, this one is-
That came in today, so it's on the amended agenda.
For Bonneview Road Trust, 21 Bonneview Road, Roger R. Moran, Paula J. Moran. And this goes along with the great work that's being accomplished with these funds. And need a motion to have the chair sign.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll sign it. All right. Now we're going to old business. Southwick Fire Department, perfect, perfect timing. Deputy Chief is here. Firefighter EMT pool selection. And we tabled for one week a decision on, because we had one candidate that we had offered employment to who withdrew. And we had discussions whether or not we would pull another from the last interview pool. Has everybody had a chance to digest that?
Yeah.
Anybody ready to make any decisions?
I had a long discussion with the deputy chief, and I appreciate his candor and time that he spent with me-
Thank you as well.
Regarding this. The department's in a tough spot as far as where they need to be, as far as the manpower. I still think that this particular candidate needs to progress further in his, in his education as far as before he can come onboard full-time as, and we see light at the end of the tunnel. And I know I plan to personally reach out to this, this candidate myself to kind of reiterate that and let him know my feelings on this and as far as, this is not a knock on the candidate himself. It's just, I think where we are and where they need, where a candidate needs to be in the course of their paramedic training and education and seeing the end of the road as far as getting to the, the paramedic level would, would seal, seal them as a, you know, an employee of, of the town of Southwick. And I, I think we're gonna have to kind of either, you know, we're gonna have to go back and get additional candidates to come in. But I think that at the rate, at this, that this particular candidate's progressing, I, you know, I think that the staffing requirements as we move forward are still gonna be in their favor as we get closer to their, finishing their schooling as far as getting toward their medic. That's, that's Doug Mogulyn's opinion.
Okay, and I think we've already heard your opinion last week.
Yep, and I actually did reach out to the candidate and had a great discussion with him today and same theory. He, he's well aware that he's behind and he's, and he's going in the right direction. And I told him he basically has our support, he just needs a little bit more on that education side. And, you know, I, I think he'll be a, a great fit and to keep moving forward and let me know about his progress and as he continues. We had a, a great conversation for an hour and a half and I, and I think he fully understands that he's just, you know, I said, "Where were you a year ago? Why didn't you start earlier?" You know? And we went through the whole thing about being a kid and growing up and sometimes you rebel against your parents because you don't wanna do what they do and then sometimes in the end you kind of figure out, guess what?
They're not so bad.
They're not so bad, yeah. So, great conversation.
I can't wait for that, Dad. I'm not there yet.
I, I'm not there yet either. He's 28 though, so he's there. Mine are 27 and 24 and they're definitely not there. But, yeah, so, same discussion. We had a great discussion and, and he's not out of the loop. I said, "I'd like to keep your, your packet in, in, in the deal and, you know, as you move forward." And we're gonna keep looking for people, I guess, if we don't vote tonight or do vote. And, and you're not dead. You're not, you're not gone and just keep doing what you're doing and you're, and you're still in our thoughts and, and you're there, so.
So you wanna just keep everybody in the pool still and then he's going through the posting now?
Yeah. And I, and I, you know, and the kid laughed and said, "Do I have to reapply?" And I said, "Well, no, your, your stuff's still there, you know, um, you know. I don't know if you interview in, in three or four months or two months whenever we do it again or you write me a letter saying that your progress is and, you know." I said, "You're not out of the loop, you just, you just gotta keep continuing, you know, you're, you're in third grade and I need fifth graders and you're almost there, you know." And he, he completely understands, he's young, he gets it, you know, this, this world today. The only thing I, I'm glad he did say to me personally is, "Please don't give me that job, I need to earn it." And I said, "God damn it, you're absolutely right." And that was great to hear that out of him, you know, because sometimes we do stupid things. But it was great to hear that. He says, "No, no, I, I need to earn it." So, that's, that's my, my take on it.
Chief?
Just going forward, I would, you know, for a timeline, what is the expectation of the board? I know that six months has been put out there. But if we put six months out there, I still have the same problem I have now where I'm short-staffed. Even if we post and we get a, a good pool of applicants, we're still a lengthy process. So it's almost gonna be, I would say, right now, because it takes about four months from the initiation of it to the point where it comes in front of the Select Board.
Right.
Would that four months be something where you would still consider his candidacy, candidacy as a, as a, as a very good viable candidate? Because if two were hired within the next six months, okay? We don't do another hiring again until July of '21. So that would be a, a year and, and four months.
Well, I guess you gotta put us in that position, right? Because I can't sit here and say he has a job, but I'm not, you're absolutely right. You gotta put, you know, so, so I guess if it's four months, it's four months. I'd like to see him back here six or seven? If I had a, you know, I, I honestly, eight months I'd like to see him back, so you have four months.
It's gonna, it was exactly splitting the baby to the dates you just gave, right?
Right.
So, but, but, to your point. And I think we should, we should handle this in a way that we, the way we handle, there's other positions in town where we get a pool of candidates, we hire one, but we keep the others on file and when something doesn't happen or a, a, a spot opens up, we reopen the file. So we can continue that, that process and absolutely. And, and I just think-
Yeah, if you brought me three candidates for two positions and he was one of them, I guess I'm gonna have to make a decision.
Correct.
Absolutely.
So they're still in the pool?
Yes, they are.
The pool is, the pool is continuing.
See, my mental number is it's more than two we're hiring, but you're right. If you go by the years, it's only, and I don't see it that way. Of course, you know your math, but you do. So you're absolutely right. I'm thinking, "Oh, we need six by three years." Kid, you've got plenty of time, but it's not that case, it's, it's two-
Because the timeline, one of the things when we laid it out, when I literally physically laid it out was that even on the pace we're at right now, we're still gonna be behind.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have a really hard time making our three-year mark.
Right.
It'll be close and the state will be understanding because they-
So we're only hiring two now?
Well, we have one now and Stephen still has a few things to do-
Yep, yep.
Before he's, you know, on.
So what's the '21 date? You said by '21 we're only doing-
Well, we are doing, we have this budgeted right now for two.
Okay.
We're replacing one who left, so budgeted for two.
So we still have two openings.
So we'll have two openings and then in July 2021, we'll have the last position to fill the, the assignment would be at that point. That's when the hiring, the funding would be, well, that's when the funding would be available. At that point, it would be the one to top it off at the eight.
But you're also gonna actually have-
Well, you're backfilling one now.
My, my point is you're gonna, actually gonna carry some money through the budget because you're running behind now. Granted, you're carrying some with per diem, I get it.
Right. Oh, yeah, they burn through a lot of other money.
And some overtime.
Yeah, so we've got two, but you've got two in the budget that you're not having filled yet.
Correct.
Right, but don't forget, we didn't annualize that. We only did nine months on that appropriation for those two.
I understand.
We need to annualize.
We're not gonna make that either.
Right.
So, we would love to have that discussion at that time.
Yeah, and we will. Yeah, that door's not shut at all. Nope.
So just in a quick mouth, we'll probably see in July.
Yeah.
If, if we get the applicants. I don't even know that we're gonna be in that position right now. It's an open application.
Right.
So it goes until we have the applicants, that's what involves running.
So you have your union coming up, you have your negotiations, you have your wage issues. So I think there's a lot in play that hopefully makes us more marketable.
Right.
I, I don't know.
We gotta get rules of, what's the tape? What's the tape you guys use?
The Krasnan tape?
No, 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 not the police line tape, the white tape.
Oh, like the, the medical tape?
Medical tape with our phone number on it. And we just start winging it into everyone's ambulances.
Oh.
Whatever it takes, dude, at this point.
Right, little gift ones, yeah, here you go.
Auto mechanics right now are putting little labels on the bottoms of oil filters.
Mm-hmm.
Call us for a job, right? Because the next guy they want, you know what I mean?
The blue guy underneath that's aggravated.
Believe me, it's everywhere, right? And I, you know-
But you said you were in high schools looking for help.
We, we were, we're out of colleges, you know, and I was joking with the deputy, you know, half joking about, you know, whatever we need to do to try to get candidates through the door. We need to do it.
And, and we had to discuss-
And if we can-
We've had that discussion about how certain towns are literally grabbing the kids out of high school, investing them all the way through.
Well, these guys are taking them right out of college too, so that's, I like that too.
It's been a resource that we've tapped into.
Right.
And it's been very, very beneficial for us.
Hey, we got places to place you.
But unfortunately, that, that program ends. Stephen's in class, the last one to go through at Springfield College, and no longer offer the paramedic program.
Really?
What, so it's gonna be just what?
How silly is that, when there's such a demand?
Dick in, in Greenfield, maybe?
Well, it would be Greenfield, Dick is part of Greenfield.
Okay.
And then you have a, a few other private programs. GCC is affiliated with the college, but it's still kind of a private program in that you get your certification one way, your certificate another.
That's too bad, that never-
Yeah, it's very unfortunate because historically Springfield College has produced the best paramedics in the industry, for sure, in our area.
Wow.
Yeah.
You know, you'd have plenty if the fire, if the police department didn't keep stealing them.
Well-
No, you had some- Light Bridges, Westcott, you've had some great guys.
They're, right, they have good EMTs. We have really good EMTs right now, but it's that next level of paramedic that is very daunting to people, because it is a big undertaking as we've talked about.
Yeah.
And you gotta make sure you, you address the price point.
Well, that's what I was just talking about. Maybe, maybe we find, we massage things that open some people's eyes.
Without telegraphing too much, yeah.
His chief was doing that today with council and I.
So, looking forward to the future and we'll probably, it'll probably be about four months before we get some candidates up and running. Or maybe sooner, we'll see. If we get some good applicants and we get the process going, but it does take some time. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Randy, good seeing you.
You too.
Have a wonderful night.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda like the governor. When the Lieutenant Governor's here, we don't call him Lieutenant Governor, we call him Governor, right?
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, it's one of those things.
All right, yes, sir, sure.
You know.
Today's the 20th.
What?
Today's the 20th.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. We can get away with it.
That's okay.
Okay, uh, let's, we've gotta get out of here, so, uh, let's see, we're back to, we're back to old business. Alum treatment for the lakes that, uh-
Sure, would you like me to go over the results?
Could you go over the results very quickly? Because we're gonna be going to the, uh-
Sure. Today, myself and the Lake Management Chairperson, Dick and Dennis, we opened up the two RFP responses. And they were within about 15,000 of each other. One was about 705. It's a company we really haven't had any experience with, they're out of state. The closest entity that they gave as a reference was in Rhode Island. The others are in other locations. And then Solitude, the company that we are aware of, that has done 1,000 treatments in, in New England. I can't say they're all alum, but they've done, and they're about within 2% of the other number. So we're going through and having the lymnologist, Mr. Dr. Wagner, is looking at them right now, so he will be making a recommendation, so.
What's the other number?
You were 705 and 720. So you're within a couple of percentage points.
Okay.
And of course, under an RFP process, you are not bound to take the lowest bidder.
Okay.
And the company that is the lowest bidder does not have a record of a Massachusetts application.
Okay.
So that's all being reviewed. Uh, it doesn't really change, you know, at this point, the fact that you have to step in, the dollar amounts for Dr. Wagner and contingency, so you're essentially up to the 800.
So when we meet tomorrow-
Yep, which you are posted for to go.
We're going to say that we are gonna write a warrant article up to 800,000. Okay.
A bond authorization.
A bond au, right.
Right, and within that language, we do have the ability to also have, within the, the gross number, you'll have a dollar amount and then some of it you can apply as unreserved funds in hand and then you borrow the balance.
Okay.
That is the way the article's structured.
Okay. All right. So when we talk about numbers tomorrow, we're gonna say that when the, because voters are gonna wanna understand where we're at, we're gonna tell them that we're estimating 800,000, okay? It could be a little bit less. And we are going to suggest to the Community Preservation Committee that they use some of their monies that they have available and the balance would be a bond issue. Okay. Sounds good?
Because you have borrowing, don't forget you need to carry all your indirect costs.
Right.
Because this is not a general fund project.
Correct.
So you really wanna make sure you're carrying for those other costs.
Okay. All right. Next thing we have under old business is LMC charter. And you and Mr. Mogulyn were working on that?
We've been reviewing the draft, we'll have that for next week.
Next meeting, okay. So that's tabled. Building Inspector Recruitment Process updated.
Want to speak to that or you'd like me to speak to that?
You're the chaperone.
I'm checking to make sure the clerk is still locked down there. Yeah, right?
Just start what I'm doing.
Okay. So the, the recruitment committee has, we met again last week and we interviewed four candidates and we are going to advance four candidates to this board.
Subject to-
Ooh.
Subject to the yada-yadas.
The background, well, they have to go through a few steps before they make it to a final interview.
And, and when do we anticipate that we would be able to do the interview process?
Late March.
Late March, okay. Because our current building inspector's retirement is scheduled for April, but he is going to assist us until we have someone onboard and he's, has time to review different things with him, any pending cases and, uh-
He's, he's agreed to, in principle, to do this very same thing Tommy did, which would be to stay on for a number of hours after April 1st.
Okay. All right. Very good, excellent. Thank you for all the hard work, the two, the two of you and the other. What do we have, also Planning Board involved?
Planning Board Chair and the Fire Chief.
And the Fire Chief.
So we will need at some point, um, interview questions to be submitted independently by each board member.
You got it.
Already got one.
Three questions?
Yes, please.
Three questions, Chief.
How long would you like the interviews to be?
Six minutes.
I think he's on narcotics, anyways.
Twenty, thirty?
Yeah, I think this is a pretty important, I think we wanna-
I mean, your Fire Chief meetings were, you did four candidates for Fire Chiefs too.
Right. Uh, I, I think that, probably that 15, 20-
About 20.
Minute.
Yep. There'll be some hefty discussion here.
Right, because I think we wanna have a, a good handle on, on this position.
Because we're all expert carpenters, so we should have to get decent questions.
Well, that's gonna be one of my questions. You know, you ask them right up, what's a two by four?
It's a two by four.
You know, and if they don't, if they don't, if they don't know that, right up.
How about this, um, because, you know, you, you, you did elect to meet on the 30th.
Correct.
So would you like to start at five or 5:30?
That's entirely up to Mr. Mogulyn.
We can step them in because you do have-
Okay. I work till five, Mr. Mogulyn works till-
Till I get to get up and come here. So 5:30 is like a really pushing it for me to start.
So why don't we say 5:30?
Thank you. I, thank you, I appreciate that.
No, I just wanted to make sure, we're, we're good, so it's 3:30?
And no one cares where I work currently, so I guess that's fine, yeah.
No, 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 no. This is ski season, oh my god.
I was, I was informed-
That's all good.
Right, because don't forget, we have town meeting the week before.
Look, when you're the chairman, goddamn it.
I can do whatever I want, right? You know, hey, no matter. Just tell it to my people, they'll tell you.
Just go ahead, say it, I'm just the clerk.
Oh, I, I already forgot about that. Oh, I, I already forgot about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I am a clerk.
All right, uh, any other old business that were, are not, uh, on agenda?
Well, you, you had the cop grant update that I gave you.
Yeah, I already checked it.
The police chief had, uh, given you all an email, you.
I think it's in our chair mail.
It was in your email.
Okay, plus the emails.
So he just wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with them still proceeding with that, just as, uh, you know, an option to bring back to you.
I think it's, I'm very comfortable, especially since the superintendent of school is, uh, a verbal commitment that they might, uh, entertain, uh, sharing some of the expense.
Okay, so, um, would you like me to respond to the chief by saying that the board is okay with him continuing the submission?
I think we squash it, because we got enough headaches over there, enough things they want. I just think it's one more dollar we don't have, but that's my opinion, I, cause the numbers have changed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Since, since the, the first grant, cause we're responsible for more.
Right.
The schools will be responsible for more than she thinks she's responsible for, cause the numbers have gone up.
And they get their money from you.
I was gonna say, it's kinda, it's kind of, it's, it's an interesting argument.
Yeah, and dispatch needs to be moving in a different direction, right?
Gladly help you. They're just gonna come around and ask us for that money.
Right, but I think what Russ's point was with that was.
We split it amongst three.
Right, right now, you're funding the whole school resource officer through the police.
I understand it.
As opposed to that way, you're doing it.
I'm still supportive of the application on its merits.
Yeah, we got, we're doing quite a bit with that police department and, and you got a dispatch issue that they wanna keep pumping up to a, a different position. There, there, you know, it's a, it's a funnel and I just, they, they, there's no money in the funnel, so, that's just me, I, I'm on narcotics. I don't know, I just, when, when do we stop? When's enough?
Well, we, we kinda gave.
It's just an application.
And in the same breath, if you apply for it and then we say no, we look like buffoons that we got it and we said no, three months from now, because we're not gonna fund it. I, I just, I don't know, I'll shut up.
All right, uh, they made the argument that, that between retirements and things like that.
Yeah, we all die someday, tell them.
Right, that, that there would be openings and this might be an opportunity to.
Three years anyway, we have to absorb it.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta absorb it.
And now that we have some sort of commitment from the school, although, you know, it's, it's true, we, we, we funnel that money in. Uh, but, but at the same token, there would also be a share by the other two communities, although very minor.
Yeah, we should actually go back to making sure the one we have now.
So I just think if, on the second page of this email from, uh, that was attached from Sergeant Miles as part of this, who I undertook some of the analysis here, was that, so the initial look at this was like, oh, there was a limit to the total grant.
The cap.
Correct, so there's an eight thousand dollar expense and, and I'm rounding, eight thousand in year one, you know, nine thousand in year two and twenty-two thousand in year three, um, if the school approves and so that there's still seventy thousand dollars, um, without the, uh, the schools pitching in um, and somewhat less, obviously, if they do submit the eight thousand dollars. Um, again, I think I still would be supportive of the application, we'll see where it lines up, cause of, cause of the nature of it. And by the time that the person, the fourth year, yeah, we're gonna be in a position where.
We need them anyway.
You're gonna need them anyway, so it is a discount.
Even the third, yeah.
It's still a discount.
The chief's anticipated departure.
We don't know, we haven't seen all that, we haven't seen that movie yet, so, but it's still a discount.
Could you make a?
I will make that, I will make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
It's only money, it's only money.
All right, uh, that took care of any other old business?
Uh, I don't, I have an issue on the high-speed internet committee, is that under old business or new business?
Old business.
Old business, we had a resignation, uh, so I guess this board needs to move to accept Parry's resignation. He got a new job assignment and it's gonna be out of town significantly, so he'll be unable to serve. And I'm trying to get one more, but we still have one, two, three, four, four other members besides myself.
Spell that person's name?
Parry, P-A-R-I, and I don't wanna butcher his last name, it's H-O-X-I-A.
All right.
And he's a great guy, he brought a ton of value to the committee, unfortunately, he can't continue, so he sent me an email that he's signing off. So, but I think that this is the appointing board for that subcommittee, so I think it had to come here, I can't just.
Yeah, he's resigned.
That's what I'm doing.
When you find a new member, we'll.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, we made note of it.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, anything?
No, no.
Okay, Carl, anything?
No.
New business, uh, well, it says we're gonna adjourn to go to the, the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District meeting um, concerning the proposed budget, but before we do that, does anyone else have any other new business?
I can't think of anything, sir.
Any need for an executive session?
No.
Okay.
Do you wanna mention the fire department's game dinner that they had that was extremely well attended?